Go on, meeting in order. Yes, all please rise and join me in a moment of reflection on the business that is for us this evening, and please keep Ukraine's population in your prayers, if you would. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Clerk, please take your roll.
Alderman Vassal.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor City Clerk Trezor and Attorney.
All right, no special presentations tonight under the consent calendar. We've got the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting from February 15, 2022, along with the approval of the payroll and the voucher list for the period ending February 25, 2022, and also asked the approval of a special events permit requested by the Parks and Recreation Department to conduct their annual Chocolate Chase 5K on Saturday, April 16, 2022, from 8 o'clock till 11 o'clock on the designated route. Need a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion.
Move by Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Key. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
All right, no sealed bids. Under my report, just a couple of things. It's braced to see the end of the mask mandate. Hopefully, it's permanent, and we can go on with our lives. I'd just like to take time to thank all the residents who put up with all this for the last two years plus. It's been hard for many people and residents, shop owners and the like. But also take out time to thank our employees. We've had, during this time, we've struggled in some cases to give the services that people in our town have always enjoyed, and we are somewhat successful. Unfortunately, we did have cases of COVID in Public Works, Direct Department, our front office throughout this whole pandemic. So again, I want to thank everyone alike for all their work during that. On an upbeat note, I'd like to congratulate Kendall Coyne. Unfortunately, our home star came in with the silver medal this year, but you know, silver's better than nothing, and she was a tribute to the city of Payless Heights. And if you know, we recognized her last time with the key to the city, and she was the grand marshal of our parade, and I'm sure this summer we'll do something else for her too. So just again, good luck and congratulations. And then also, just as I mentioned in the opening dialogue, the Ukrainian situation, as much as I don't always trust Facebook, I did see on Facebook today the two Ukrainian churches on 131st Street are collecting soft goods, whether it be bandages or diapers, wipes, things like that, to send over to Ukraine. So if you can make a point of give a call over there and see what they're looking for, but the next, and speed is important too, obviously, with the crisis going on over there. It's a minute-by-minute change, but they're picking up some goods and going to ship them over to the Ukraine for the benefit of the refugees. And so again, keep them in your, keep those people in our prayers too as we go along. Yeah, time.
Would it be possible for like the South Suburban Mayor's Conference that you have to like, you know, really put pressure on maybe Governor Pritzker and then have him in turn try to put like pressure on this administration so that they, you know, would not only support Ukraine in some way, shape, or form, but also too, we have to start thinking about, like some of the aldermen were talking about, like the gas consumption and how it's getting out of hand, and that's going to affect a lot of residents up and down the economic scale. And if, you know, maybe they're not getting the message in Washington DC how critical and how it's going to impact everybody, everybody who has a car and a heating and any other type of power source that you use that's coming, you know, it's ridiculous. Alderman Clifford just said one of the local stations has got to sign up for $6 a gallon, like within a couple of nine irons from here. I mean, you know, we, people have to like complain because if they don't understand how important this is to everybody, and I think especially the younger people that aren't making a lot of money, that maybe, you know, have a job, they go to college, how the heck are they going to get around and go to school?
Well, I'm sure over the next couple of months, that will be coming out for sure because it's going to have to be something more than on a local level. It's going to have to be at the national level for sure.
I agree.
All right.
Just off on what Alderman McGrogan was saying about the gas and taxes, you know, it's not going to solve a problem by increasing the taxes and everything like that, but if you want to get, make it more viable again in people's hands, freezing the current tax rate that's generated year after year, it's an automatic, would be to roll them back to maybe pre-90 or something, to roll the taxes back and freeze them there till this all blows over to make it more equitable for people. That goes on the state and federal level. You know, don't freeze them. You're just freezing a raise that's going to come anyway. Roll them back to save them some money and that because it's bad. I was watching like the news and I'm looking at my granddaughter over and now one particular segment, a young lady holding a brand-new, four-week-old or two-week-old baby, trying to get out of the country, and I'm saying to myself, that could happen here, that could be my granddaughter, you know. So you've got to feel for these people, and reiterating what you were saying about the Ukrainian churches, and if you have anything that you can donate to them, to the leisure, you know, suffering and pain over there, I'd encourage you to do it.
Good, okay, thank you. City Clerk?
No report.
No report. City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Uh, City Attorney?
Thank you, no report.
Any communications anybody have tonight? Citizens wishing to address the council? Not Finance Committee? Alderman McGrogan.
Mr. Mayor, we have no report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Speak up.
Yeah, come up here and give your name and address, I'm sorry.
Sure, okay. Michael Higgins, 6209 Princeton Lane. I came before the council about four months ago about the speed limit on Route 83.
Right.
And I wonder if anything has been...
Yeah, in fact, we, I met with the city engineer, I mean, not city engineer, the Public Works Director last week, and he's, the engineering study's been done and they're working on it right now, so we should know something within the next, deal with the state of Illinois in the next couple of months or so.
Yeah, okay. Can I ask how successful that, you put up a speed thing on 83 east of Ridgeland Avenue, you know, records the speed, how effective was that?
I can't tell you, I don't remember offhand.
I have to get you to replay.
We can get you information on that, that's without a problem.
And just the third thing, and I'll get out of your way.
Sure, no problem, no problem.
East of 83, or east of Ridgeland 83, just past Mama Vesuvios, there's a turn-only lane that goes into Hampton's where I live.
Okay.
Okay, and then you have 83 running there. It's 45 miles an hour on 83. People are going over into the no-turn, and they're going 45, and then they try to get over because you've got to turn, otherwise you're going to crash. There is a sign that says that it's a turn-only and only. Is there any, any way that the city itself could put up like a flashing light to let people know because at nighttime you can't see it?
We can't because it's a state route, but we can...
Okay, can you answer that?
Yeah, sure, yeah, no problem.
All right, great, thank you very much, God bless.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Here, Mr. Higgins.
Yes, sir.
This is the report on the study that was requested from our Public Works Director in the state of Illinois.
Yes, sir.
It's all right here.
Thank you very much.
See you, Mike.
Hi, Mike, how are you?
Good. Okay, anyone else? Finance Committee? Alderman McGrogan.
As I said, there's no report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Punk Safety? Alderman Vassal?
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda, but I have a couple of safety notices I'd like to present to the public. Number one, most importantly, is recent mailbox thefts that I'm sure everyone has heard about. Thieves are breaking into mailboxes, not necessarily residential, but more importantly, U.S. postal boxes where we deposit our mail. And boldly enough, they're breaking into U.S. mailboxes right in front of U.S. post offices. So just this week, Payless Park Post Office was hit for the second time, someone trying to break into the box. Payless Heights has been broken into in the past, Lamont last week, I think it was, their mailbox in front of their post office was broken in. So our police chief has asked me to let you know that if you are still paying your bills or sending any important mail through the U.S. mail, don't put your mail in your residential mailbox with your flag up because that just alerts a crook that there's some mail in the box and there's a nice place to make a stop and make a pick. If you're sending checks out, the crooks are what they call washing checks. They take your information off of your check, they remove it, and then they rewrite the check, and before you realize it, your account, your account has been debited substantial amount of money. So what they're recommending is that if you have any important mail or checks to mail, you bring them directly to the post office, inside the post office, and not merely to the box outside the post office. And it sounds like we have everything to worry about and we can't step outside of our door without worrying about one thing or another, but it's something to be aware of all the time. For the past couple of weeks, I mentioned also a scam about love connections on the internet, and I won't go into that too much again today, but I would recommend watching on Netflix a program called Tinder Swindler, and it's really worth watching because it does highlight sad events from a couple of people, several people that were scammed from not a couple of dollars, but hundreds of thousands of dollars. So none of us are beyond being scammed. Finally, I'd like to recommend that if you're not familiar with a program called a Knock Box, Knox Box in Payless Heights, it's a program that the Fire Department has and the Police Department works with, where you can have a security box put on your home with your key in it. So if there's ever a need for a 911 call or a well-being check on your house, instead of the police or the Fire Department breaking down your door, they can have access to your house through a lockbox. And if you can get an application at the Fire Department or the Police Department, or I'm told we're going to have some here at City Hall, there's a fee for the program, but it's well, it's well worth the minimal amount to save entrance to your house and maybe save a life. So that's the end of my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Municipal grounds of property, Alderman Begley?
Thank you, Mayor, I have three motions tonight.
All right.
The first is a motion to approve payment to Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for professional services for the Cal-Sag Trail at Lake Catherine from September 21st, 2021 through January 29th, 2022, in the amount of $17,501.32.
Move Alderman Begley, is your second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion, roll call?
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Yes.
The second motion this evening is a motion to approve payment to Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for Lake Catherine Nature Center environmental site assessment for the month of January in the amount of $4,937.13.
Move Alderman Begley, is your second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion, roll call?
What was that, what was that bill for, besides just engineering?
Environmental.
Any specifics?
I think this is, yeah, all environmental site assessment, and I believe it has in part to do with...
Environmental site assessment and stuff like that.
It's for the parking lot, we need to do that.
Renew the lease.
Renew the lease, they had to do... It's all tied into the park, proposed future parking lot.
Renew the lease is what it is.
All right, that's all, no, thank you.
And the last motion this evening, Mayor, oh, sorry, sorry, I jumped ahead, sorry.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. The final is the motion to award the 2022 tree removal trimming and stump grinding bid to Home Retreat Care in the amount of $41,250.
Move Alderman Begley, is your second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion, roll call?
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Motion carries. That's the end of my report, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman McGovern, planning and zoning?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10 on the agenda, probably one of the longest ones we've ever had around here to lead, but...
Can't really lead.
So listen up, you've got to memorize every word of this.
I was going to make that comment.
A motion to authorize the city attorney to draft an ordinance allowing a five-foot non-privacy fence on a corner lot to extend beyond the front building line along Comanche Drive, specifically 23 feet beyond the building line at the northerly property line and seven feet beyond the building line at the westernmost corner of the house connecting between these two points in a general straight line.
You want to take a rest?
Can't do without laughing, I'm sorry.
Convince it.
You have to get a survey.
What did I lose? Yeah, okay, was...
The general straight line for the single-family residential.
Connecting between a two-point general straight line, a single-family residential home located at 7358 Pueblo Lane, which approval and variance contingent upon the applicant submitting and a building commissioner approving the site discretion landscaping and a landscaping plan to appropriately screen the fence and preserves the character of the neighborhood, pin number 2336216023000.
A second.
Move Alderman, thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, I have to take a turn.
Want to repeat that? I'm sorry.
Short condensed version in Cliff Notes, the guy wants to put a fence out X amount of feet in front of his landscaping, which is an aside because the wood can cure him getting out, just to place it in front, it's an open picket broad iron fence, would new landscape be put in front of that?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's contingent on the landscaping plan submitted by the petitioner on a building department.
That's what it says, yeah.
We don't need that anymore.
Okay.
Okay, item number 11, which is much shorter, finally. Motion to authorize the city attorney to draft an ordinance allowing a seven-foot sideyard setback in lieu of the required 10-foot sideyard setback along the western property line with variance limited to the distance of the length of the proposed addition to the principal residential building located at 12740 Payless Avenue, pin number 23362040110000.
Second. Move Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Key. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll finish.
Take a rest, take a rest. Alderman Key, Recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance to sell an I-Bid pontoon boat as surplus equipment.
Second.
Move Alderman Key, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion, roll call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Roads construction, Alderman Clifford?
No report, Mr. Mayor, except that our Public Works was out there during their last storm, or numerous hours there to keep our streets clean and safe, and kudos to them.
License permits and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no items on the agenda this evening, however, I would like to remind the public that we are, we'll be hosting a public forum, public hearing on Monday, March 7th at 7:00 PM in the Orchard Room at the Payless Rec Center to discuss allowing video gaming in the city of Payless Heights. This will be restricted to the existing businesses in Payless Heights that qualify, serve liquor, and the golf course, and with restrictions on advertising as well. So 7:00 on March 7th, if you can. If you can't, please send in your comments via email to my email, blewandowski@paylessheights.org, or the general email address for the city. I've gotten a few emails, correspondences already, and it's great.
All right.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, water and sewer, okay, you're up here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we have a few, we have a few investments to make here on behalf of the city. I move to award the Menominee sanitary lift station rehabilitation to Integral Construction, Inc., in the amount of $453,200.
Second. Move Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key. Discussion, roll call?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
And I move to approve proceeding with the 2022 water distribution system leak survey by Emmy Simpson in the amount of $15,275.
Move Alderman Violet, is your second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Key. Discussion, roll call?
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yep.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
And I move to approve proceeding with the 2022 hydrant flow testing by Emmy Simpson in the amount of $16,960.
Move Alderman Violet, is your second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Key. Discussion, roll call?
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
I move to approve the purchase of a hydraulic power head saw for the purpose of cutting water main piping and concrete piping in the amount of $11,865.
Move Alderman Violet, is your second?
Second.
Alderman Key. Roll call?
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes. I move to approve the painting of 230 fire hydrants by Giant Maintenance and Restoration in the amount of $19,090.
Move Alderman Violet, is your second?
Question?
I need a second first. Want to second it?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski.
Is that the end of the hydrant program then? Is that the second half, or is that still the first half?
I believe we're doing it in thirds, and it's kind of a continuing program. I don't think this is the last one. I don't think this is the last grouping.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes. And to further explain, this process is pretty much sandblasting the hydrants, all of the old paint off of the hydrants and putting on, putting on a new finish. The one in front of my house was done last year, and it looks really good, and apparently it's going to, it's going to last for quite a while, but it is a multi-year project that we're doing some at a time.
Instead of just painting them here?
Right.
We're doing this every year?
Instead of just painting them over and over and adding more coats of paint, we're actually, we're actually doing them correctly.
It's a big project.
I also move to approve the second payment for Lindell Brothers in the amount of $59,865.30 for the 123rd Street water main.
Second.
Move Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key. Discussions, roll call?
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
And I move to approve payment to RJN Group for professional engineering services in the month of January in the amount of $5,229.95. Services included include GIS assistance and on-call sewer system services.
Second.
Move Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key. Discussion, roll call?
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Yes. I move to approve engineering services for design and construction of the 2022 sewer rehab program in the amount not to exceed $63,700 with RJN Group.
Second.
Second.
Move Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
I move to approve the 2022 on-call engineering services with RJN Group not to exceed $20,000.
Move Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
And I move to approve proceeding with engineering services with Strand Associates Inc. for the lining of 16-inch water main on College Drive from South Austin Avenue to South Monarch Avenue in the amount of $54,000.
Second.
Move Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call?
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
And I move to approve payment to Strand Associates for professional engineering services in the month of December in the amount of $14,212.59. These services included water capital project prioritization and emergency response plan development.
Move Alderman Violet.
Second.
Second by Alderman McGrogan, discussion, roll call?
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes. I would like to comment that these expenses with Strand Associates are the beginning